Good afternoon. At this time, I will call our Suffolk City Council work session to order. Our only item of business is an update on the 2021 redistricting plan. Mr. Manager?
Yes, Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council. The City Attorney, Mr. William Hutchins, will provide the background and introduce our consultant for this evening's discussion.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of Council, tonight, Robert Lofton with the law firm of McGuire Woods is here to provide you with a report on the redistricting plans and to take any questions and aid in the discussion of City Council. And I'll turn it over to Mr. Lofton.
Good afternoon. How is everybody?
Good afternoon.
Are you able to hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Always want to make sure.
Thank you.
I just argued a case last week in the Supreme Court of Virginia, and our system crashed the court's WebEx system. So I'm a little sensitive to technological issues right now. It was great fun. It's always good when the clerk of the court calls you and gives you a hard time. We're here today. I was here two weeks ago to give you an update from the meeting on January 5th. Four points on the agenda. One, just to look at the 2020 census data one more time. Two, to go back over the legal requirements for redistricting. They're the same requirements that I gave in my presentations to the City Council last year. I thought it would be helpful in talking to Mr. Hutchins just to make sure they're front and center in your minds. The third point is to go over the proposals, which are the two proposals that I gave to you in November, and a new third proposal, and then to answer any questions. But of course, as I've said before, please feel free to interrupt me as I'm going through everything. I don't mind that at all. Just a quick refresher from the 2020 census data. The total population was 94,324. That's up from 84,585 with the statutory adjustment for inmates. There were 170 inmates added to the population. That brings us to 94,494. And when you divide that by the seven boroughs, we have a target goal for each borough of 13,499. The legal requirements, excuse me, as we're getting to the point of y'all deciding which way you want to go, I thought it would be good to just go back over these. They're very straightforward. Pursuant to the Code of Virginia, local electoral districts have their three basic requirements. One, they have to be comprised of contiguous and compact territory. Two, they have to, quote, "give as nearly as practicable representation in proportion to the population of the district award." And three, they have to have clearly defined boundaries. In terms of what contiguous and compact is, this is widely litigated around the country. Here in Virginia, there's no precise statutory definition. Contiguous may include territory at crossroads and bodies of water. Compact is often honored if there's a failure to accomplish the other criteria, such as one person, one vote, or racial fairness. The goal of compactness is to avoid elongated, twisting, or an odd-shaped district. There was litigation back in the 90s, you may recall, for Congressman Scott and the district that they did there, and that's what the courts prohibit. In terms of equal population, it's more or less equal population, and we've talked about this repeatedly. The law recognizes that there'll be deviations from perfect division of the population and that it can be practically impossible to divide a locality into districts, or here, boroughs of identical population. The legal general rule is that the population deviations should be no less, should be no more than 5% from the target, and the smaller the percentage, the better. And if we go over 5%, we're going to have to explain it to the Office of the Attorney General when we go through the preclearance route, and it's going to invite litigation. In terms of clearly defined and observable boundaries, I know we've talked about this as well. Code Section 24.2, 305 lays out the requirements: a named road or street, any road or highway, which is part of the federal primary or secondary system, a river or stream, or a drainage feature that is on the Tiger Line files that the Census Bureau uses, such that, you know, if you have a creek in your neighborhood, that may or may not be an appropriate boundary, depending on whether the Census Bureau picks it up, or any other natural or constructed or erected permanent physical feature that's shown on a map issued by VDOT, or the U.S. Geological Survey Topographical Maps, or a polygon boundary from the Census Bureau. And then before we go to the proposals, just to go back to some overarching legal principles governing redistricting, you know, the Constitution of Virginia has been amended to specifically incorporate the Equal Protection Clause of the Constitution of the United States into our statewide redistricting process. And so even with the principles that I'm going to go over, even if we follow them all and do everything by the book, this is still America, and anybody can sue anybody for anything. As, you know, you all have various jobs and businesses, and that's just an unfortunate part, well, fortunate and unfortunate, depending on whether you're a plaintiff's lawyer or defense lawyer. Sorry, a bad lawyer joke. But my point is, even if we do everything the right way, I want to make sure I'm not doing my job to you if I assure you that we're ever going to avoid litigation. And I think if any lawyer ever tells you you're litigation-free, you should grab your wallet and run. Principle number one, in terms of just overarching legal principles to keep in mind, one, the whole number of persons reported in the most recent federal census by the U.S. Census Bureau has to be the basis for determining our district populations. So we can't look backwards, we can't look forwards, we have to look at the data that we have right now. Number two, districts have to be drawn to give racial and language minorities an equal opportunity to participate in the political process, and shall not dilute or diminish their ability to elect candidates of choice, either alone or in coalition with others. Number three, districts may not be drawn in such a way that members of a racial or language minority group are dispersed into districts in which they constitute an ineffective minority of voters, or are concentrated into districts where they constitute an excessive majority. Principle number four, districts will be struck down by courts for violating the Equal Protection Clause if they cannot be explained, thank you, on grounds other than race, and while not dispositive, as I've already mentioned, bizarrely shaped districts are strongly indicative of racial intent. Principle number five, a district becomes an unconstitutional racial gerrymander if race was the predominant factor in the drawings of its lines. And principle number six, a district may be drawn to ensure incumbents retain residency in the district, but the redrawn district itself must be compact and contiguous. While challenges to this are no longer recognized in federal court, it's unclear whether they may be brought in Virginia State Court. So in terms of the proposals, you know, and I know you've seen these, Proposal 1 is the same as it has been, and I know it's hard to see with these screens, so I want to go over Proposal 1 and 2, they're here, I'm happy to answer any questions. And then we've also given what I've called Modified Proposal C. As the City Council knows, Mr. Ward, after the last meeting on January 5th, he sent me three different maps, a Proposal A and a Proposal B, and then he sent me a Proposal C. I looked at all three of those maps over the last two weeks, focusing, once I got through my argument last week that I mentioned to Mr. Hutchins, and then what I have given you is a Modified Proposal C. I will say, I think all three proposals in front of you are legally defensible, and I could stand up in a state or federal court and defend them for you if you wanted me to, but I feel comfortable defending each of them. And from my vantage point at this point, it's your decision as to which proposal you want to adopt. So with that said, I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have, or respond to any other direction you want to give me.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Lofton. Just before we move forward, just so everyone on the dais understands, you know, we'll open it up for questions from Mr. Lofton, or you can present your comments. And then at some time, we will need a motion in regards to which maps we will move forward to the public hearing, whether it's Option 1, Option 2, or Option C, either one of them, two of them, or three of them, all of them. So we'll start off with comments or questions, and Lee, Vice Mayor, start off.
I just wanted to know if IT could enlarge the screen so that people could see the figures, the numbers, and the streets and all.
Can he hear that?
No, I'm talking, the screen where the numbers, I can't see them, and I'm sure people in the audience, anybody can't see.
Okay. But can the IT guy hear that?
That's what I'm asking, I want to know if IT can make it larger or not.
Can he? Hey, Andy? There we go. That's, Mr. Bennett, that's what I was asking, if the IT guy can hear these comments as we're talking right now, or if someone needs to go grab them. So Andy, if you could scroll down, there's a table at the bottom of that slide, there you go. Are you able to maximize, zoom in on that table?
Can you have a picture of it? Can I have a piece of paper? Is there a piece of paper with this on it? Is it Option C? You know, it may have been on my computer, but I don't, I don't see it yet.
He cannot, okay.
We don't have a printed piece of paper at this point. The maps were sent out to City Council yesterday. I don't think we've made a printed copy. We can get some printed copies for City Council.
Yeah, we can.
Well, so, Mr. Bennett, I'm happy to respond to questions as I'm able, so...
Okay, what I'm looking at here is no streets or anything saying where, whatever, all we have is a blank map and some numbers down below, but it doesn't say starting point and exit point. It just has different colors, seven different colors.
Andy, can you hear me? If you could go to the Google Maps link that I sent you. Okay. Oh, it's, how do I, hey, Andy? Okay, do, do the, do the, oh, do Proposal C? And do, and do the 2011 plan. All right, Mr. Bennett, we can zoom in and out on this. So what would you like to see? So what you have there, I'm going to walk this way so I can see the screen because it's not showing up on my screen. The 2011 plan are the red lines that you see on the TV, and alternate C are the colors.
Wow, thank you. So how, where do you want to zoom in, Mr. Bennett?
Well, I was trying to see street names of whatever.
Right, so we can zoom in on street names, so where do you want to go?
Which borough?
All right, any borough, you can explain Option C, so you can go through Option C with all of them, because all of us need to know, because all of us will be affected by it, not just one borough, it's going to be all seven of us.
I understand that, so...
You can start it either way, one, and go through them all.
Andy, zoom out, please.
Whatever way you want to go.
All right, well, as I've, we've talked before, and the conversations I've had with some of you individually or in groups of one or two, the Nansman Borough is the driver for the redistricting and the growth of the Nansman Borough. So with this Proposal C, what Nansman does, thank you, Andy, and go back, keep going up to Nansman, the purple, and zoom in a little bit. So what it does is, you can see the red line of where the Nansman Borough used to be, and under this proposal, everything that's in purple would be the new Nansman Borough. 664 would be the primary north-south line on the northern part of the borough, and the southern portion of the borough would include all of Pewsville. And so in terms of the racial demographics of it, excuse me, it's now 68% minority and 32% white. Andy, can you go, please, to Sleepy Hole? So, Mr. Bennett, do you have any more questions? I mean, I'm just going to give a general overview of each, but I want to be responsive.
That's fine.
Okay.
But if anyone wants to ask questions, that's up to them, but I'm just wanting everybody to see where the lines are being changed.
Right, and so Sleepy Hole, you know, and the biggest changes are between Nansman and Sleepy Hole. There's some other changes in between Chucka Tuck and Holy Neck, but the biggest changes under Proposal C are between Nansman and, excuse me, Sleepy Hole. And so whereas Nansman is 68% minority and 32% white, Sleepy Hole is 62% white and 38% minority. And keep in mind, like, it's not always 100% because of how the Census Bureau allows you to record multiple races for individuals. And so under this proposal, with the 664 demarcation line between Nansman and Sleepy Hole, the, what was the southern, the southeastern portion of Sleepy Hole, you see there in the red line, gets split between Nansman and Cypress. And Andy, can you zoom in on that, please? The green, purple, and brown. Zoom in, there you go. No, no, a little bit more. So that's how the split is being made between the three boroughs, and that's to account for the growth in population in Nansman and keeping Pewsville together. I'm looking to see if you have any questions before I go on.
Okay, go ahead.
Mr. Fawcett, did you have a question?
Just go back up.
Andy, zoom back out and go north.
So the red line indicates all borough lines.
Yes, sir.
But now it's extending into Harborview.
Yes, and so, like, generically, all of Harborview, which is in, when I say, and, like, I know I live in Richmond, and I grew up in Norfolk, and so I, you know, I don't know the ins and outs of Suffolk like you do, but the whole western part of what is the current Nansman Borough, west of 664, I generally will just call that Harborview. I know that's not all Harborview, but that whole portion would slide into Sleepy Hole. Yes, sir?
So virtually takes, is it take Harborview Boulevard from 17 to College Drive? Is that what you're saying?
Yes, sir.
So everything on the north side of Harborview Boulevard would become Sleepy Hole?
Yes, sir. Under Proposal C, if that's the proposal that the City Council adopts.
I mean, I have some trouble with not seeing, I would like to have seen and examined this map in a more setting so I could see the actual streets, and the only question I have is the majority of the north end of 17 to College Drive is commercially heavily commercial. Residential is very limited there. There is a couple of neighborhoods there, but predominantly it's heavy industrial, office, complex, strip mall, things of that nature. The other portion of that is to come down and see where it kind of breaks at, where before it goes into, so there's a piece right there, it kind of has a stopping line at the bottom, and I'm not sure where that, actually, that boundary stops.
Where it goes south, Andy?
Very bottom of that diagram, where it's, before it goes into Cypress. So I'm not sure what those boundary lines are and those locations are in those address areas. I know we talked earlier about Shoulders Hill... I'm looking to see if you have any questions before I go on.
Okay, go ahead.
Mr. Fawcett, did you have a question?
Just go back up to Sleepy Hole Borough and...
Andy, zoom back out and go north.
So, the red line indicates all borough lines.
Yes, sir.
But now it's extending into Harborview.
Yes, and so, like, generically, all of Harborview, which is in, and all, when I say, and, like, I know I live in Richmond and I grew up in Norfolk, and so I, you know, I don't know the ins and outs of Suffolk like you do, but the whole western part of what is the current Nansman Borough, west of 664, I generally will just call that Harborview. I know that's not all Harborview, but that whole portion would slide into Sleepy, Sleepy Hole. Yes, sir.
So it virtually takes, is it take Harborview Boulevard from 17 to College Drive? Is that what you're saying?
Yes, sir.
So everything on the north side of, of Harborview Boulevard would become Sleepy Hole?
Yes, sir. Under Proposal C, if that's the proposal that the City Council adopts.
I mean, I have some trouble with not seeing, I would like to have seen and examined this map in a more setting so I could see the actual streets. And the only question I have is, the majority of that north end of 17 to College Drive is commercially heavily commercial. Residential is very limited there. There is a couple of neighborhoods there, but predominantly it's heavy industrial, office complex, strip mall, things of that nature. The other portion of that is to come down and see where it kind of breaks at, where before it goes into... So there's a piece right there, it kind of has a stopping line at the bottom, and I'm not sure what that, where that, actually that boundary stops.
Where, go south, Andy?
Very bottom of that diagram, where it's, before it goes into Cypress. So I'm not sure what those boundary lines are and those locations are in those address areas.
So which?
I know we talked earlier about Shoulders Hill and part of Bennett's pasture Park Road. South end is considered Cypress as you go down the Park Road, but the right-hand side would be considered Sleepy Hole Borough.
Correct.
So the part I'm trying to get my head wrapped around is, if I had an overlay where I could see what I had lost from the original to what the new maps would be, whether it's
Well, that's what...
Option 1, 2, or 3, this is not definitively enough. This is, I can't, I'm sitting back here looking at a screen, you're blowing up, but I really can't see what I want to see. So, you know, I really have a problem with looking at a map prior to making a decision on something that, I don't want to give a clear picture on this. I really don't. And I don't know if anybody else in this room does, but I don't want to hang my hat on something that's going to affect the Sleepy Hole Borough without seeing the entire layout of each one of these maps, which I've already looked at the first two, but this map just came to us two days ago. And you can't see this on a computer on your desk unless you've got a monster setup. So I'm just not happy with what I'm seeing here. And time is an essence right now. So if I want to hang my hat on something that's going to affect the people of Sleepy Hole, I want to make sure that I'm clear on what they're going to have to, what's going to be the change for them. This is about the constituents, not me. I'm not going to be here forever, but I'm just not, I'm not convinced here yet where I want to go with this. But anyway, you can go ahead on.
Counsel, anyone else have any questions for Mr. Lofton? Questions or comments? Councilman Goldberg, go ahead, turn your speaker on. Councilman Goldberg?
The first scene, this, I like to see Borough 7, what it looks like and laid out there. I don't know all the streets there either.
So the red lines are the current lines?
Right.
So you're, you're losing a portion under Proposal C?
Okay.
That's going to drop down, and then you're going to gain a portion to the east.
Okay, Alvin's folks, I've already had that. So I'd go out to Star Motors, which is saying, out to that part of the bypass.
So, and Mr. Mayor, Mr. Hutchins, I mean, I'm happy to go through the same process that we've gone through and talk to folks, like, set up a Zoom, like, have them scroll in, scroll out, you know. So it's, I, like, that's not my call. That's, that's your call on what you, what you want to do.
So it looks like, just what I can tell, on this one, I would lose the Hollywood section right there. I would lose that part.
Right, that would go to Whalaville.
That'd go to Whalaville, and if you go up again to the, to the right, now up here...
Thank you, Andy.
I would pick up Macbin and that area. Magnolia Meadows over there, and that's, and that was originally... Mr. Bennett, am I getting your house?
Yeah.
It's, it's close.
It's close. Okay.
But, and as we've talked before, I mean, you are allowed to keep yourself in any new borough, but protecting incumbents makes some tricky line drawing.
Okay. All right, I've got the picture. Councilman Goldberg?
Scroll back out.
I might want to ask one question on the other side there. Is Patriot Walk, that's right there by Macbin, that whole section?
Yes, sir.
Is that in Sleepy Hole? I mean, not Sleepy Hole, Suffolk?
Scroll in, Andy.
It looks like it would be. Can't hardly tell. That's Nansman Parkway coming down and taking in...
Yeah.
It looks like I would take, it looks like I'd take it all in.
Yeah, take all of it, yeah.
So we would, we would keep Old Mill Creek also in that and just add in Patriot Walk on that. Okay. And what does that do to the numbers? I can't see the numbers underneath one of this.
Under Proposal C, Suffolk, well, the deviation's 1.45, 2.8%. It's 44% white, 50%, 56% minority.
Okay. Okay, I'm, I'm good.
And under Proposal C, the majority-minority districts are Nansman, Suffolk, Whalaville, and Cypress. Yes, sir, Mr. Ward.
Turn your mic on. You tell me what the percentage of the Suffolk Borough now?
Say again?
Could you tell me what percentage of the Suffolk Borough now?
Certainly, certainly. Hold on one second. It's 39% white, 60% minority.
Councilman Johnson?
Mr. Lofton, do the same thing for Holy Neck, please. You'll start right up at the top and show me how it's changed.
Andy, can you zoom in, please, on Holy Neck? It's number five. So, Mr. Johnson, you take in the kind of southwestern portion of Chucka Tuck? And then scroll down, Andy, and show the line between Holy Neck and Whalaville, please?
Thank you.
So that line remains the same, Mr. Johnson?
Right.
Keep going south, Andy. Thank you. So, and then you, you get that western portion of Whalaville?
All right.
And that's, that's the domino effect of shifting Nansman, shifting Sleepy Hole, which adjusts Cypress, which is going to trickle down and affect Whalaville, which then hits you, and then, once that happens, then that's the impact on Chucka Tuck.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so let's go to Nas, I'm at Cypress. I wasn't trying to push it ahead or anything, but after we, I need to see where that's, where that's...
Go to the northern portion, Andy, please. A little bit more, there you go. Zoom back out real quickly. So, Mr. Bennett, what you see there with... I'll, I'll let you look at it. So you're going to get that, that square that's now brown inside the red line, that used to be Sleepy Hole. And then, Andy, if you go south, so, a little slower, zoom, so those lines aren't changed, and keep going south, and then there, around the Suffolk Borough and Whalaville is where you're going to, there's some carve-outs there.
Okay, so are we going by the red line or the...
The, the red line is the current line. The, the colors are the proposals for, and this is for this Proposal C.
Okay, scroll on up.
North or south, sir?
North.
Go north, Andy?
Hold right there.
Oh, go back down, Andy, please, and hold right there. Thank you.
Okay, go on south.
Go south, please, Andy. Track a little bit east. Thank you. Keep going south.
Okay. Let's see what it changes up there. I call it, go ahead.
Keep going south, Andy. So, and you lose that portion between the red line and the new light blue. Keep going south, Andy.
Okay, that goes, you go over there, I'll put it down.
Go back up, Andy, I'm sorry. Zoom in.
Where, I can't tell. I think it's, it's not here, blue line, that goes your road?
Zoom, zoom in again, please, Andy. And go to the east, right there.
Six, yeah, that's over, okay, that's over the road, okay.
Now zoom out and go south, please. Zoom out a little bit more, please. There you go. And so where the red line is, that's the current line, so you're going, you're going to lose the southern portion of what is currently Cypress.
Okay. And what's the numbers?
Your number, sir, excuse me, your deviation's 2.1%, white population's 37%, minority population is 62.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Williams?
Yes, Mr. Lofton. Can we look at Whalaville?
So, Andy, let's go to Whalaville now, please. Thank you. Where would you like to go, Mr. Williams?
Let's go up towards Suffolk.
Go north to Suffolk?
Right up in there.
Perfect.
So, so what you're saying, I will actually gain Hollywood, Jericho, the north side of East Washington?
Yes, sir. Go south, Andy, please. So, and then there's a portion of that line that remains unchanged, then you're going to get that sliver, Cypress. Keep going south, Andy. Thank you.
So that's really, is that White Monro?
Um, I...
Metal country.
Metal country.
Zoom back out. Go south, please. So, and then you're going to get that whole southern portion.
Over towards Washington Ditch.
Okay.
Keep going south, please, Andy. Zoom out, please. There you go.
I'm, I'm fine.
Yes, sir.
Where, where's the community of Whalaville, the rural community up there? Is that in Holy Neck?
Yeah. That's back in west.
The Nansman Borough?
I'm sorry, I can't hear you, sir.
The Nansman Borough.
Andy, go to the Nansman Borough. Where'd you like to go, Mr. Ward?
All the way up top.
All the way to the top?
Yes.
Are we going out in the river, or?
Right up there where the Restless Beach at, yeah, right there, okay.
Zoom out just a little bit. There you go.
Come on down some, please.
Come down 664?
Yes.
So 664 becomes your western boundary line.
Okay, I want to, show me the Pewsville community.
Go down to Pewsville, please. And the red line is the current line.
Yeah.
Yes, so all of Pewsville is all in Nansman, under Proposal C?
All of the community.
I'm sorry, sir, I cannot hear you.
Well, some more of the community that was not in the...
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you.
Counsel, any other questions? Questions or comments? Councilman Johnson?
Repeat one more time, all three proposals you could litigate and substantiate and not have a huge problem with?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I, I could walk into court and defend all three.
Okay, good, thank you.
There's no other questions or comments. Mr. Lofton, thank you. I mean, he's brought us. We had two proposals. We now have a third proposal to consider, and in his opinion, they're all legally defensible. So with that being said, at this time, I would need a motion from someone in regards to what maps you would like to be made available for the public hearing, which would be at our second meeting of, is that correct? Our first meeting, be in our first meeting next month, which would meet the requirements as far as posting. Councilman Fawcett?
Yes, Sir Mayor, I'd like to go ahead and make that motion, if possible. I'd like to make a motion that Map 1 and 2 be presented for a public hearing at the earliest date. We can have that presented.
Okay, just give me a moment, I'm writing these down so we don't repeat ourselves if we have to. Okay, at this time, Councilman Fawcett has made a motion for only Option 1 and Option 2 to be brought forward for a public hearing. Do we have a second to that motion?
Let me ask you a question.
Councilman Goldberg?
These are the two that would be presented to the public. We hadn't made a decision yet on anything.
Correct, that's right. There, there is no decision whatsoever this evening as to which map would...
Gotcha.
-would be adopted, because it's the purpose of the public hearing.
Right.
It's only in the event, we've had three maps that have been presented.
Right.
If no one is enamored with one or two of them, then they wouldn't need to go to the public hearing.
Gotcha.
But any map that wants to be considered would go to the public hearing. We would have the public hearing, we would listen to the comments there, and at that time, we can also entertain changing. We can still, if I'm not mistaken, Mr. Lofton, we can still amend any one of the three maps that go to the public hearing. Is that correct?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Okay, so, even at the public hearing, once we listen to our constituents and get a consensus over which map they would prefer, if they need to be changed somewhat, we could still change them. The key right now is, do we want to eliminate, if you will, any of these three options, because as a body, we don't have any interest in one of them or two of them. We can send one to the public hearing, two for the public hearing, or three for the public hearing. So, at this time, Councilman Fawcett has made a motion to only forward the original Option One and Option Two to be made available to the public hearing, which in essence eliminates Option Three, Option C at this time. So, Councilman Fawcett has made that motion. Do we have a second to that motion?
I want to, can, can I amend that motion to add three to it, and just have a-
Well, no, we'll just vote on this one.
Just on that?
If we don't get a second, it won't need to be amended.
Okay, well, I'll, I'll make a second to accept it, then.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second to forward only Option One and Option Two to the public hearing. Now, it's also possible to make a substitute motion-
Right.
-to that before we move forward. Councilman, did anyone else have questions or comments on the original motion, or would they like to present an amended motion? Councilman Johnson?
I can't agree with, I don't agree with Proposal Two, and from my perspective, but I am of the opinion that maybe we should send all three. So, could I make a substitute motion to-
Absolutely.
To send all three proposals to the public hearing.
Okay, we have a substitute motion from Councilman Johnson to forward all three proposals forward to the public hearing, which is Option One, Option Two, and Option C. Do we have a second to that motion?
Second.
Councilperson Butler, you got a second? Is there any discussion of the substitute motion, which is to bring all three, move all three options, make them available at the public hearing for consideration? Is there any discussion of that motion?
Yeah, I want to make, I want to ask a question.
Councilman Ward?
As a body, as a council, what we doing now is sending all three maps. And by sending all three maps, we want to let the public choose what map.
Well, the, the public won't necessarily choose it, but they will make their voices heard. It'll still be our choice as to which map is adopted.
So, another way, we're going to come back right here and choose which map we prefer to-
Correct, the council will.
I want, see, I want to get things clear, because I want to make sure it's clear. Because I don't want to see that, you know, we have an opinion and we can discuss, discuss the maps. And that's why I want to make sure I have time to do that.
Basically, we will go through this process again as far as questions and discussion after the public hearing. The public hearing would precede our discussion to try to finalize which map it is that we want to adopt. So, at this point, we still have a motion from Councilman Johnson and a second from Councilperson Butler Barlow to move all three, make all three maps available for the public hearing. Is there any further discussion of that motion?
I just had, had a-
Vice Mayor Bennett?
Yeah, I just want to make one comment about it. All of it is that I wish we could have gotten these maps earlier, where we could have seen what we saw today. I think it would have been very helpful to all of us if we could have been able to digest that a little bit earlier. But so be it. I mean, this is it, so we will look at all three of them. But I really would appreciate it if we had have been able to have that earlier, so we could have seen the exact lines and all that. I think it would have helped a lot of conversation and concerns, so. But that's, that's in the past. But I just had to let that come out, that I thought that I was a little bit late in getting the information. Yeah, I'm ready for the vote.
Well, to, before we vote, to the Vice Mayor's point, I mean, we just instructed Mr. Lofton to come back with his third map within the last two weeks. We're not voting on the map.
Right.
So, you got two more weeks, 17 days, to digest what has been presented. The only issue we have this evening is, do we want to eliminate one of the maps from consideration? That is the only thing that we're discussing this evening. So, with that being said, we have a motion and we have a second.
Mayor, if I may-
Yes, please.
I didn't hear this in the motion, but it, it sounds like council is considering doing it on February, the public hearing on February 2nd. If we are going to have more than one map, I think staff will need more time to, because part of, the advertising isn't just advertising the physical drawing. We've need to advertise, we need to also have the boundaries typed up in text. And so, if there's more than one map, I do not believe we can get that typed up. I mean, our deadline would be tomorrow to make the advertising requirement, because we have to advertise for two weeks.
Change it to the 16th?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so the motion would be to have a public hearing on February 16th, at which time all three proposals will be presented for the, for the public meeting, for the public hearing.
Also, Mayor, from what our attorney said, then they would also have enlisted in all the boundaries. It's something that Mr. Bennett had just requested, so that we could really see what those boundaries are.
Yes, sir.
And we'd have them, so we could study them. So, I think that would be a much better situation.
I mean, it's a good point, too.
We actually know what we'd see.
Yeah, based on, based on this evening, you know, if we could get out in advance, you know, an enlarged version, or be prepared to-
Yes.
-to present a version that's, you know, easier to analyze, if you will, and also have that available for the public hearing, too, because we want our constituents to be able to understand.
Only fair, that's right.
Right. And we've got a little bit of a jumpstart on it than, than they do. So, you know, with, with Mr. Hutchins' comments, then the motion would be to schedule that public hearing for February 16th. Do we have any other discussion? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Just for clarity, that, the consent to have that date, about the maker and the secondar, just for clarity, Councilmembers Johnson and Butler Barlow?
Pam.
And we voting on all three maps now?
Right. We just, we are voting to move all, make all three maps available for the public hearing.
Councilmember Butler Barlow?
Yes.
Councilmember Fawcett?
Yes.
Councilmember Goldberg?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Ward?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Bennett?
Yes.
Mayor Doeman?
Yes.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
I understand we have a motion for a closed meeting this evening. Madam Clerk, will you please move, read the motion for consideration?
Pursuant to Virginia Code Sections 2.2-3711A8 and A1, consultation with legal counsel employed by a public body regarding specific legal matters requiring the legal advice of such counsel, and the discussion, consideration, or interviews of prospective candidates for appointment, and the assignment, appointment, and performance of specific public officers or appointees of the city, specifically the appointments as shown on the attached list for vacancies or term expirations, for the Clean Community Commission, the Early Childhood Development Commission, the Economic Development Authority of the City of Suffolk, the Fine Arts Commission, the Historic Landmarks Commission, the Human Services Advisory Board, the Local Board of Building Code Appeals, the Parks and Recreation Advisory Commission, the Sister Cities Commission, the Planning Council, the Tidewater Youth Services Commission, and the Western Tidewater Community Services Board.
Motion has been presented for consideration, Councilman Fawcett?
Moved to approve.
Motion for approval, Councilman Fawcett, Councilman Goldberg?
Second.
Second, Councilman Goldberg, do we have any discussion of the motion? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Butler Barlow?
Yes.
Councilmember Fawcett?
Yes.
Councilmember Goldberg?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Ward?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Bennett?
Yes.
Mayor Doeman?
Yes.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
That concludes reconvenance, 6:00 PM.